All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Good evening. This is the Town of Southbridge Joint DPW Subcommittee Town Council Meeting on Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM here in the Veterans Room. Call to order is done. Roll call. Councilor Adams is excused this evening. He's got business. So I'll be taking the reins this evening. I'm Councilor Daniel. I'm present. Councilor Shania?
Here.
Citizen Lazo?
Here.
Citizen Splain?
Here.
We have four people. We have a quorum and a meeting. Okay. Item number three. Consider and accept the Department of Public Works Subcommittee minutes of June 14th, 2023.
Motion.
I wasn't here, so you got to say it.
I wasn't here.
I'll second. Any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain? To abstain. Item number four. Review discuss the appointment, reappearance of Steve Lazo to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June, through July 31, 2024. State ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend Town Council approve this appointment.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Steve for his continued service to the town. He does a nice job. He's very knowledgeable. And I appreciate your continuing to carry on the fight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All those in favor?
Abstain.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? Nope. 301. Item number five. Review discuss the appointment of William Cody to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2024. Pending completion of state ethics, entertain a motion to recommend Town Council approve this appointment.
So who's who?
Moved by Council, by Citizen Lazo. Second by Councilor Shania. Any discussion? Okay. I'd like to thank Mr. Cody for coming on. And at this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Splain for his good service and work to the committee.
Thank you.
We vote?
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number six. Review discuss the Town Manager's appointment of Eric Rumsay as Deputy Director of the DPW effective immediately. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval. Motion by Council Lazo, by Citizen Lazo.
Of course I had that. I used to be.
Second. That's right. Second by Citizen Splain. Discussion? Before we go to the councils, I'm wondering if Mr. Benoit, Director Benoit would be able to speak to the appointment?
So it's my belief that Mr. Rumsay would make a great candidate for this position based on his knowledge and abilities and the tasks that he does now for the Town of Southbridge and his background knowledge for the MS4 programming, his experience in the GIS, a lot of office experience with different computer programs and stuff that they, I think he could help us streamline some of the systems and programs that were kind of lacking in our DPW. And I feel like that he would be a very valued part of the team that we're trying to build to get Southbridge back on track.
Very good. Committee members. Councilor, Citizen Lazo, and Citizen Splain.
I just want to say, I want to thank Mr. Rumsay for coming forward for this position. I looked at his resume, it's second to none. And I'd be happy to support him on this issue. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Splain?
I'd just like to say the same thing Steve said, but my question is, is when would your, if approved next Monday night through Town Council, when are we hoping to have you in DPW rather than planning? Do you have a tentative start date? I'm assuming he must have.
It says effective immediately, immediately on him here.
Otherwise, some discussion about a transition process to go from planning to DPW. I don't know if maybe either the Town Manager or Mr. Rumsay can speak to that. It's not something that I've been part of.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, if I could, I mean, if this is approved, then certainly we'll advertise the position of Town Planner as soon as possible. But the benefit of having him still employed by the town is that there is that help for, you know, information sharing and some of the transmission and transition issues that have to be taken care of. Or when a new Town Manager comes on board, at least there's that resource that's present in town. So I would support that.
So it's safe to say that he will, that Eric will start right away doing some work at DPW?
Exactly. Yeah, we actually had him and did a few meetings in the MS4 and tried to get him into this thing as well. And I did also say in the interview that I do believe Eric is a qualified person and would do a great job at this position.
Very good. Council Shania?
My question, George. Can you think that the Planning Department needs assistance when you're gone? I'm sure you will, or you do come back and help, not on a regular basis, but to assist them in a project they might need, and will you allow that to happen?
We're all kind of one big team here, so, you know, we're willing to make it work.
I would agree with that also.
Mr. Rumsay, is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity and, you know, thank the Town Manager and Director Benoit, but their confidence in it.
All right, good. Further discussion?
I work with Eric in my job as the, in the Assessors Office as well. And for the same reasons, I would, I would be in favor of his changing the job status as well. I find him to be very even keel. His personality to me would be a good fit in that department. And the even keelness of how he approaches things or issues is a positive, positiveness to it as well.
Thank you for saying. Did you hear? I'm sorry. Am I missing someone? Oh, yeah, just look at me.
I'd like to agree with what everybody says about Eric. He's a real asset to the DPW. I think he'd be a good fit and probably just what we need to get things up in a better direction.
Thank you. Goss? Goss?
Oh, yeah. I was just curious if, assuming he gets this, which I have to tell you, is there any consideration, this is three years to charge, is there any consideration just splitting on the planner and conservation agent sides of his current job? And seeing if you can find somebody at least as a part-time conservation agent? Because I think the Concom could really use a lot of extra help that Eric has had to do a lot more planning-related stuff that I think Concom could really grab from somebody called this conservation side.
Respectfully, I respect the question. I think it's something that should be considered, but I think that's something you should be able to bring up with potentially Eric and with the Town Manager at a different place.
Would not sign on the general bill. That position?
Probably would. Yeah. Anyone else? There being no further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Congratulations.
Well, I wish you all good evening. I'm actually heading downstairs to print my own books.
Tommy's got to clean his cubicle before he leaves.
Good. Item seven. Review discuss the Town Manager's appointment of Peter Proventura as Operations Manager of DPW effective immediately. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval. Motion by Citizen Lazo, second by Councilor Shania. Discussion? Director Benoit?
The only thing I can add to this is similar to Mr. Rumsay. I feel like Mr. Proventura is going to be a very good asset to myself and to the department. He has been a very straightforward and respectful individual since my taking over this position. He's, seems like he has some very good leadership qualities, not just based on things that are on his resume, but he's a pretty go-to-flow guy that wants to get things done. He's very helpful in, you know, problem-solving at the facility. And I think that he's going to be somebody that I can rely on to better format how our day-to-day operations are.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Splain?
The Director said according to his resume, we don't have his resume. We don't, I called the Town Manager's office yesterday requesting it and was told they do not have one. Alls we have is an application.
We're not on his app for two years.
So then, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
According to our email yesterday from DPW Chairman Adams and Hannah, we had an email in reference to job description.
Mm-hmm.
So my questions are, according to the job description, they are listing that the candidate must have four or five different hydraulics license, pesticide license, I believe it was a right-of-way license. I don't see anywhere on this town application that this person, who, I have nothing against the person himself, but does not obtain any of these licenses that they are looking for in the job application. And it's also looking for five to seven years in municipality management or equivalent. I'm just, the lack of information that we received from this application, this applicant, I'm kind of, it's tough to make a decision on it. We don't have any information other than what was listed on this town application, which is a standard application for any job in the Town of Southbridge. And no resume to go with it. Like I said, I have nothing against the applicant, but we have nothing here to judge on. And if I were to judge on what was given here and what the job description is, I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you.
Very good. Out there from the committee first. Council Shania?
What I found over the course of my time here is that we've way too often gone against the Director and based our opinions on the job applications or a resume where we weren't involved into the hiring practice of any department, not just DPW. We have a new DPW Director that is trying to build, I think, his team. And for that team to work is to select people that he thinks is going to work for the community. Now, I look at the Operations Manager's job and it doesn't say that it's required. It's a recommended minimal qualification. Just a recommendation of that. And what I have found over the course of time is that our minimum recommendations, not on just DPW jobs, but jobs throughout the whole town, is something that I find our expectations are too high and we don't get the people that we want. And in the bottom line, I think, for me, is that it's up to the DPW's Director's responsibility to hire the people that he thinks he's going to be able to work. But the bottom line, if that person doesn't succeed, it's up to him. Fire him. Let him go. He has that ability to do that. So it's, I think it's time for us to put some trust into our department head. If the department head doesn't do the job, then it's up to us to fix the department head. And if the individual doesn't do the job, it's up to the department head to fix the individual. And if it can't be fixed, adios. That's the way I feel. So for me, I looked at some of these things here, and I understand he's been here a short time, but it's somebody that this DPW Director is willing to work with and train, that is going to work for the department. And it's also my understanding that it's been offered to other people in DPW that refused it. And I think our biggest thing over the course of this last year is trying to get people in DPW to work as a, as a team. And to stress the importance of, you know what? You work as a team, you do your job in here, you have the ability to move forward. So for me, I'm going to support the, the appointment of Mr. Proventura. And again, the bottom line, if it doesn't work out, it's up to him and, you know, the old saying, there's no way the door hit you on the way out. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Would you yield to the Director for a moment? Thank you. Director, then Citizen Lazo, then Mr. Splain?
So I respect Mr. Splain's comments about, you know, the information that's provided. And I understand for myself, as somebody that is usually sitting on the other side as a reviewing person who's doing the interviews or handling any conversations with the applicants, there, there's always questions, no matter what. And under the circumstances that we're seeing now, I want to say that I've interviewed nine people for this position. And I think we've offered this position now to two or three other candidates that have essentially turned us down and made other arrangements, which opened up the doors for the last few people that I interviewed. Out of those individuals, all three individuals that I interviewed were very strong, respectful candidates in their own way. The reason why I chose the individual that we have here is, you know, due to my conversations with him in, you know, his past experiences with leading a crew of people, his ideas on what his thoughts are on how to fix the environment at the DPW, how to get morale back up in the facility, how we can move forward with better handling the operations aspect of projects and day-to-day operations in town. That being said, I agree, most of our job descriptions are requiring a lot of other experiences. I'm not trying to hire Mr. Proventura to go out and run equipment, but it is something that could necessitate a part of this job. Just like myself, when I was hired here, there was questions about not having a hydraulics license, which I agreed at the time that I would do it. I still plan to do it. Haven't had the ability at the time to do that yet, but I do intend to. And perhaps that's something that myself and Peter can work on together and just get it done and take care of it so we have those skill sets or we have those certifications in case they're needed. My, my recommendation with the pool that we have at the moment, and honestly, I feel like he has some strong skills in other places that some of the, even the candidates that we offered the position to in the past did not have. So he's an individual I feel like I can rely on and that I can trust and that can support me in helping to move this department forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lazo?
I just want to piggyback off the Director. For all the years I've been on council and as a sub-citizen member, I see that department crumbling. The infighting, the last Director and the engineers, they all just left and walked away. They had infighting. It was a lot, it was a lot of mess. Happy that we have you now and Mr. Proventura coming forward to put time in and let straighten this department out once and for all and get some camaraderie in there and, and let's make it Southbridge DPW and be proud of it. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Very good. Mr. Splain?
Do we know how many people applied for this position?
Total?
Total. And how far back are you going?
I think all told, we probably received 11 or 12 applications total since we posted the position. Out of those applicants, I think I've interviewed seven or eight.
So like I said, I have nothing against, P and I go way back. I have nothing against her totally. My thing is, is I think that when a position becomes open in a town, whether it's Town Hall side, DPW, police, fire, whatever department, that the department head should be involved in writing the job description. And I'm not afraid to say it tonight, but the HR department has dropped the ball numerous times in the last two years on this. And they've done it again, in my opinion. Thank you.
Just for the sake of clarity, this was approved by the Town Council on February 4th, 2019. And I don't know that Human Resources was around at that point.
No.
I don't think it was. So this is something that was done probably with the previous Director. I'm speculating. I'm speculating. I'm assuming this was done with the previous Director and the then Town Manager, probably.
Yes, it is. What is that date?
I'm sorry? Well, it says on the job description, February 4th, 2019. Okay. Council Dow?
Thank you, Chair, for you. I served on that committee for three years. And what I see in the past is we don't let the Director do his job. Every time he comes forward with someone, he thinks it's going to fit him and work with him and improve the DPW facility. We have a kindergarten, a bunch of crybaby. They cry, they want the toys to play with, and when you give it to them, they don't want it. They leave it and walk away. So I believe, with respect to Mr. Splain tonight, last time I was on the media, he hiked behind a paper to walk because he was scared. Bunch of kids here crying. The one attacked me outside when I walked in the media. I think it's enough is enough. Those people, they don't like it. They keep crying. They can leave. We're not holding them back. We need to build strong DPW. It's failing apart. Now we have a strong candidate, good DPW Directors. We come in here and we fight them. And I don't think that's your decision, Mr. Splain. Sorry about being forward, straight talking to you. I'm sure you got a few phone calls. Same people cry like before, same people complain, and they never want the job. I think enough is enough. I think we should move forward and think smarter and give that gentleman here a chance to improve his stuff. I think it's enough to be spoken that people want to do the right thing for the Town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Mr. Tran?
Yeah. To answer a couple of questions here. Been around a long time. Those job descriptions, thrown away. To be honest with you, thrown away. They were, they were written by a couple of people who sat down and said, these are the criteria that we have now. We had an Operations Manager with all those qualifications. Asked for a small raise, but refused. He wasn't worth it. He left. Okay? Great guy. We lost him. Those were the qualifications he had. But nobody from Nassau is leaving their job to come here with those qualifications. You've got to be realistic. Okay? Let's get somebody in there at least and build upon it. Nobody starts with all their licenses. Everybody wants people to come in with licenses. The DOT don't. Get your, get your CDL. You got to go to school for it. Eight to 10 grand. Okay? Nobody's coming here for the money you're paying. Then you want hydraulic licenses on top. I mean, let's be serious here. We need people. We, this town is going to be hurting. Winter time is coming. Okay? And we have a small crew. We have to shut down sometimes. We're not machines. Let's fill the positions. Let's, let's think realistic. Okay? I'm not saying just hire any Joe Small off the street because they're a nice guy. But if they've got qualifications, what's the worst thing that could happen? If it doesn't pan out, he's gone. We start over. At least we have a body for, per year. We've got some experience. We see what we want as far as a department, and we can move on. Thank you.
Council, I'll take it.
Thank you very much. I can just read it.
He was for you. He'll say Mr. Piopin. Sorry, Mr. Piopin.
Mr. Shania, Mr. Dow, the bottom line is, Rich is the boss. And if you want him to do well, we've got to let him pick his own manner. That's what a boss does. And we've got to start meddling with him and give him a chance. I think we should let him be the boss. Doing a good job.
Very good. Okay. Council, I'll take it.
Thank you. It's great to see so much passion tonight around this agenda item. And it's, it's great too, because everybody in this room really cares about what happens to this position and filling up the rest of the administration and management of DPW. Now, this position has been offered to a few people before. And if you go back to the item, speaking of Mr. Proventura, here's someone who came in ready to work last year, talking all the time about how he wants us to see this place get better. And now here we are after due diligence with our director that we should trust at this point. Because honestly, you're going to roll the dice again that there's no winter again like last year. I mean, we can't, we can't bank on that and wait any longer. I think, you know, technicalities are important when it comes to, I know there was some stuff missing from the packet. The, the job description doesn't exactly sound like it's where everybody wants it to be, but I think it would be a disservice to the citizens of Southbridge at this point to, to not recommend this to full council. I think it's important tonight that we're rounding out everything. And then maybe even our Director will be able to have more time to get that hydraulic license because he actually has management around him that he can build a team around and start fixing some of the other problems together. So I appreciate everybody being here and speaking about this, but I really hope that this Subcommittee will recommend this item tonight.
Very good. Council Shania?
I have one more question for Rich. Is there a way to assist employees from getting some of the qualifications that the town could provide the training necessary? You know, I mean, CDL licenses. I, I know where I, I was trained in Florida on some of the things, different licenses and stuff like that when I was doing emergency preparedness. Is that something that the town can look to? It may be offered to the employees as a benefit or an opportunity for advancement like what he's going through today and to get the extra qualifications that we want? I know it costs money, but maybe that's something to formulate in the budget that you could offer as a career opportunity for employees that work in DPW.
Honestly, we've actually had some conversations about this recently, and I think it's something we're going to be definitely having more conversations with, with, you know, individuals that are already employed at DPW, the new administrative staff, and then also, you know, this Subcommittee and Council to talk about how, how we're going to move forward to, to continue to guarantee the operations of, you know, the services in town based off of, you know, the environments that we're dealing with out in the world. You know, I've had discussions with, I know, other towns and some state departments, some local states to us have, you know, they're starting to pick up some non-CDL trucks, medium-duty trucks that you can bring people in and, you know, that don't have CDL licenses there. I did recently hear that there still might be some possibilities for us to maybe assist people with getting that license. There is class time involved, but we're going to start looking into this stuff because at this point in time, this isn't just a short-term issue. You know, the world is having issues with hiring and staffing and keeping, you know, retaining staff. Public Works has been declining for years everywhere, at state, state levels, local levels, local construction companies. Everybody is suffering because we need skills, skilled people to come into this environment. Nobody wants to have those skills, you know? So we're definitely going to start trying to put some thoughts together on how we can move forward with that.
Because we offer training to the police. We offer training to fire station. We should offer training to DPW workers because by offering all that training, we get better people. And hopefully it makes them want to stay longer. Hopefully we don't give them that training and disappear, but that's the chance we take. Thank you.
Mr. Tran?
I can answer Mr. Shania's question. We used to. I took Mr. Fallon for his practices with his first CDL. Mr. Remelar took him for his license. We used to do that, but with the, through attrition, we have lost personnel. And as times go, personnel has gone down, workload's gone up. We haven't had the time to start letting people train. I took numerous people and worked on my own time, getting the hoisting licenses, working with the hydraulics, working with the cap space or front end or the back end. This is all on our own time. Wasn't offered because we had, we had work to do. Personnel equivalence is, is affected by, services are affected by personnel. We don't have the personnel. We are immensely down from when I first started here. And the workload just keeps on going up. Henry Street's beautiful. Two days weed whacking, two guys. Okay? On an eight-man crew, that's two guys just weed whacking. Yeah, we cut that park, yeah, or any other parks, or the cemetery. So when do we find time to train? We used to.
we find time to train? We used to, but we had a better morale. People would get together. Luke, hey, can you come out and give me, let me go ride with you? Sure, I got an hour or so after work. Let's go for a ride. Pick the truck and go. On our own time. We did it. So that's an answer to your question, to one of your questions. We used to, but we don't have time anymore.
Councilor Adams has asked me to state his feelings on this issue, and he's in support of Mr. Proventure for this position, and he said that he's very much in support of it. And I believe I am in support of it as well. I think that we should allow the director to do his job, to hire the people that he feels he needs, and that's what we have the department heads for. And as Councilor Shinglin said earlier, if it doesn't work out, then there's people that can be held accountable one way or the other, but we've got to allow the department head to continue to improve the department and to get the job done. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Opposed? Three to one with Citizen Spleen opposed. The motion is carried. Agenda item number eight. Review and discuss whether to recommend town council approve a change order for $179,000 to BHB's design contract for the TIP project number 608778 to complete the right-of-way work for TIP number 608778 and TIP number 608862 and require curb ramps for TIP number 608862 using funds raised at the May 23, 2022 town council meeting for TIP construction phase and right-of-way acquisition costs for Hook and Hamilton Street. Entertain a motion to town council to recommend approval and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Say it.
Motion by Citizen Spleen, seconded by Citizen Lozano. Discussion.
Who's is that?
Can you elaborate on what this actually is?
I may have found this a little optimistic. She is an area professional in this subject.
I was so lucky to be asked to handle the right-of-way work amidst all the staff changes. Charlie had come on board. There were emails back before Michael left from the DOT saying, "We need the right-of-way done." They were supposed to be advertising at that point in December of 20, no, in, I think in December of 23, because we were initially in the TIP 24. And as it happened, the TIP ended up getting moved to 25 by DOT because they felt like in light of all the staff changes, we were probably needed to buy the extra time to be able to go forward with the project properly. So Charlie then asked me to take on the right-of-way work. We looked into the idea of handling the appraisals on our own. BHB already has a contract with the town plus a change order, and we were told there were funds set aside that also took some time for Charlie to find. Once we found where the funds were, we were all more comfortable. Okay, we actually have the funds. We don't have to raise any additional. We just need to use what's there. We can hire BHB, then they can handle the procurement for the appraisals rather than us having to go out for the appraisals and then choose. And then our town attorney will separately do the title work. We'll need to assign someone internally to kind of coordinate all of that, the right-of-way work. I'm hoping maybe that new DPW deputy director gets appointed that work, and then we'll be ready to go for the TIP 25. So this needs to be done in, they were asking us to complete it by the winter, and they'll be advertising, they won't be advertising until the following year. So we have plenty of time. There's a sweet spot of when you do the work. You don't wanna do it too soon because you don't want it to, you don't want properties to end up changing hands or you'll have to update the right-of-way paperwork, but you don't wanna be under too much pressure that maybe the appraisers charge more for the work. So that's where we are right now.
Where is this sweet spot?
Where is the sweet spot?
Okay. Meeting members, Mr. Spleen.
If I may. Peg, can you school me on some of this? It's two separate TIP projects that, from what I can tell, were signed in 2017. What's the right-of-way for? What's the curb for? What's each TIP project? Where's this project going on other than down by the registry and I'm thinking it's River Street? What are the projects? What are we trying to okay here for that money, I guess?
So you've got the rotary, right? The Hook, La Rochelle, Hamilton, Kidney Bean over to Foster Street, having Foster Street changing the direction of in-and-outs on Hook Street. You're gonna be doing adjacent to the rail trail through the TIP project.
So is that the right-of-way, or is that the...
So, if I may, through you, Chair. So that's just the high level of the project. So you have the one TIP project, right, is your downtown intersection improvement project, 608778. That's all the rotary over to the Foster Street. Then you've got the 608862, two bridges, Mill Street. And those bridges, so the two projects, a TIP project, transportation improvement project, or transportation improvement program, they're funded with buckets of money that I've seen from mass DOT. Oftentimes, they're getting lots of federal funds, a mix of different kinds of federal funds, and then you either have to pay for the design in some situations, or it's a state project and they pay for the design. So for the downtown intersection improvement, 608778, we had to pay for the design. It's our local project. When it's a local project, you're responsible for a lot more of the right-of-way coordination and all these details. And we pay for this. On the bridges, it's a state project, so they're paying for the design, thankfully, and then we still have to do some of the right-of-way stuff, coordination. So the, for instance, with the state's project, the reason we have to tuck in this little curb work on wherever is on right across from Mill Street or on River is because the state says, "In order to be eligible for this project, you need this to be AKA accessible right there." And so the local town has to be responsible for that portion outside of their responsibility. And then with regards to coupling it together, because we already have a contract with BHB for the design of the downtown, but we don't have a design for the bridges, we'll just tuck both of these into this existing contract for ease of. Agreed.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other meeting members? Beginning of the discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discussion update on Gulfwood Road project. Call for the...
Please. So at the moment, we have just recently placed the first layer blacktop on Ellis Road from Torrey Road up to about 100 feet shy of the intersection of Gulfwood. We're working north from there now towards the Charlton Town Line in the midst of some rain transitions. Ask Mr. Piyapi to continue with doing some improvements to Gulfwood Lollies there as far as some ditching and stuff, and the plan at the moment is to try to make some repairs to that section of road from Torrey Road north up at least to Ellis Road and not beyond to the dead end at the swamp. We did make some upgrades in the intersection of Ellis and Gulfwood that I think are gonna be very noticeable to the locals up in that neighborhood and those passing through. There's no more ski dump coming off of the north side of Ellis Road, which is a nice change. Just for future reference, I'll be coming back to this subcommittee after going to traffic committee because I intend to make the Ellis and Gulfwood intersection a four-way stop. We'll be back to talk about that, but we're making some serious motions up there to show the townspeople that we can actually fix some roads, and in the process of that, I'm working on putting together some plans for how we're gonna move forward with the rest of the town.
Mr. Shenyu.
What's the repair, what's the repair work they're talking about on Gulfwood?
So at the moment, we had some issues with some water backups with the ditches that were very, so now with the extent of the ditching work that Jimmy has done, there was, there's been some concerns that were brought forward to how narrow the road actually is. So we're gonna have a meeting on Friday to discuss what the costs are gonna be to resurface that whole section of road.
So you'll come back for that added funds? Or looking to get that added funds?
No, I think I'm gonna try to, we have some accounts, of course, we've been doing some exploration of existing accounts that we've had road funds in and so on. So I don't, at this point in time, I don't know that I'm gonna have to ask for more funding.
Will the project be a continuation of Ellis Road so we don't have to go off a rebid?
Correct. We're gonna work, we're gonna work under the same numbers, the same quantities.
So this way, I'm assuming it's gonna be Mr. Piyapi, so this way he doesn't pull his equipment out and have to come back?
Part of it will be part of the existing contract that we have, the remaining funds that we have on hand, and then I believe I have found two other accounts that should cover the rest.
So would we be able to get that particular repair on Gulfwood Road done before winter?
My plan is to get it done within the next month so I can kick him out of town and he can go someplace else.
So you'll come back as soon as you possibly can to this subcommittee for what your plan is? I mean, if the money's there, it's just a matter of transferring the money to the right accounts. Am I right, Joe?
You are.
Okay.
One second. Mr. Lozano.
If I remember correctly, that road had money put aside for it, and then they moved it over to the Mill Street Bridge because it was a problem there. I think Heather did that. And I think they have money, like you're saying, extra money to do that road, you know, to finish that road. And the second thing I have to say, Jimmy, you did an excellent job on Ellis Road. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
I'll be the best road in Southbridge.
Mr. Spleen.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the director. So everything that's going on on Ellis Road, including all the tree work and the extra work that Jimmy's done on Gulfwood Road, is we're still gonna stay within that original $640-something thousand?
That's, that has changed since then because we added the drainage. We added, what, 1,900 feet of drainage so far, I think, to that road, which I'm very thankful that we did do that after the recent rains that we've had. Without the addition of that drainage and especially the 1,500 feet from the church down to Torrey Road, I think that we would be back up there right now rebuilding part of the road that got paved two weeks ago, or a week ago, whatever it was. So we're definitely outside of the original number. We're in pretty good shape considering, but we're still within the limits of what we had available in that contract.
I thought we had 644.
So the original contract was for the total, I don't remember the exact number. So the total complete contract number from last year, I think, was like 1.193 million for what we originally agreed upon, and then the conversations that we had to do Ellis Road. The original conversation, I think, was $640-something thousand to do that road. And then we added drainage and some other upgrades to the road that were required once we tore it open. So at the moment, I think, I'm trying to remember the numbers that we went through today, but the looks of things right now, we're gonna be somewhere, hopefully about 850.
So the 644 was the, I'm confused, because I asked at the last meeting what the overall number was between the three relative. I was told it was 644. Now I may have 1.19.
The original contracted amount last year for, was it Coles Street?
No, we were talking Mechanic Street, North Street.
Mechanic Street, North Street. There was, what was the other street?
Coles and...
That original contract was just over a million dollars. Almost 1.2 million. And then, so wrap funding paid for those streets that were paved last year, and then it got postponed, and this year we came back into what we were gonna do. We postponed Mechanic and North because of the gas work. We're gonna, I'm gonna move forward with those streets hopefully next year. We're not gonna use the same process that was originally planned there. But we're gonna, I'm planning on doing those hopefully next year when we put out a new bid.
Okay, that was my next question. Is still...
Yes.
On our guys.
Yes.
I mean, don't get me wrong, Ellis Road, I've been down it twice. That looks good.
I drove up there Sunday during the height of that rain, and I was amazed that the water was really, it was working. So...
So the only other question I have is how many longer are we gonna have a DPW worker on that project? Because I know you're extremely shorthanded in your building, and I know we have one that's been going there.
Correct.
Do we have a timeframe, maybe?
We made some price concessions to try to stretch the money originally. I agreed to have three town workers and two trucks. We got one town worker and I donated the truck. I'm kinda getting the short end of that stick, so...
I will, I will say that Piyapi Construction has already made about $130,000 worth of concessions on their billing that Jimmy has, I don't wanna say forgiven or digested. So, you know, we're, we're in a situation where we're trying to work together to get this done as horrible as possible. Project turned out to be a little larger than originally planned, but we're gonna get through this, and I think we're making a valuable change to the town.
Jimmy, you got, not all year against it, you have two more nights, three more nights? What do you...
I can't. No, you gotta get...
Don't get me wrong, you're doing a great job, but I didn't know if it's...
Could slow it to town.
We have a substantial excavation done next week on all of Ellis. You know, we have much more substantial rock cut in the way we wanted that. We'll then try to get it to the width of the rest of the road so it's a little better than a driveway. We, well, we're somewhere over in the midst, like, well, that's like 6,800 cubic yards of excavation. We took 27 loads of rock out and cut today. This isn't like, you know...
I mean, I, people were, I don't even know, were so impressed just with cleaning the ditches on Gulfwood Road. These people that lived there their whole lives never saw those ditches cleaned out. And to see them cleaned out and operating the way they should, and I don't even know if that's even completed yet.
It's not completed.
Was like, it was like the wow factor took over just to see that, again, there's no blame on the DPW, but all those side roads over the years, they used to clean them all out. Now they got a mess on their hands because they never cleaned those things out.
The south is completely lost its emphasis on road maintenance. We worried about weeds and sidewalks and ditches and drainage and things are heavily impacted. And I think Rich is working to get it back on track.
I would like to say that I did speak to one of the residents on the lower section of Ellis Road, and she was a very nice woman, and I thought that she was a little confused at first because she did tell me that she did speak personally to Mr. Piyapi about the work that was done on the road, and she said that he was such a kind and understanding individual.
Someone else.
How old was she?
Not only are we growing the department, the town, we're also growing Jimmy.
She probably...
Councilor Dow, Councilor...
Thank you, Chair, for you. This is one of the points, you say, let's support our DPW director. I think you're headed in the right direction. You're doing a great job. Like everybody say, those roads never being cleaned, the trench or anybody pay attention on Alias and Glenwood. I think the residents are very happy there, and I want to thank the DPW director to continue looking at that citizen up there because they're concerned. They feel like they're left behind. because they're concerned. They feel like they're left behind just because they're up of the other side of the town. So I wanna say thank you for, Rich, and continue the good work and please finish that Glenwood. I have a few residents calling and they're concerned, so I hope you can go through with that project and finish that area complete. We'll have to go back there. Thank you.
Counselor McEddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did get a couple of calls from constituents on Gulf of Road. One of them was talking about some major potholes in the area. I haven't looked there myself, so it may be that you've already fixed them or not, but they did call and were asking when they were gonna get some of the giant potholes and whether you're fixing the other. A gentleman called me and was concerned about these very deep ditches that are along the side of the road.
Yes.
And I don't know what's going on with that either, but he asked the other end.
I, I did speak with that individual. I brought that to the attention of Mr. Pioppi. That will be, the, the ditching part, there was a narrow section where he had to do some rock removal and had to hammer some rock out. It's not finished yet. It will be on Friday and that situation will be taken care of.
Right, deep, consider it as well.
Yes. So the road kinda, was narrow there to begin with and then the rock kinda protruded into the road. So now that he, he hammered out some of the rock, it's a lot narrower and there's a hole there. So we're gonna square that away on Friday. As far as like the rather large potholes, we're gonna, the plan is to pulverize it, so we'll take care of all those potholes.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, Counselor Lazo.
I think one of the things we have to think about after we've lived the last two or three years when we were doing no roads, then we're gonna do some roads and some we're doing correctly and then all of a sudden this gentleman lands here and he seems to know more about a vision, what he'd like to see. When he landed, he rode around town and looked at what the roads looked like. And then he said, well, then he had a lot of questions. And then he put his ideas down. He started, he inherited a certain, a certain plan to go and get things done. But I think that I, as a counselor, feel more comfortable in allowing him to put together a long-term plan instead of paying for these studies and then put them on shelf. Right around town, you know which roads have to be done. You don't need a college degree to figure it out. The only thing I ask you is after the Main Street debacle, I'm not a big fan of Lynch paving. I think if you look at Ellis Road and see what precision paving did, it was amazing, the differential between the both companies. So I think going forward, we need to project, watch the company that we hire. Have a good flavor right now of what's going on, let's stick with what's going on and tackle more roads as outreach. You booked a good work.
Uh, Counselor Dohm.
Thank you, Chairman, through you. I hope you do the whole road, don't patch, because we waste our money and, and.
As I said before, I don't like doing pieces. I like to have it connected something. I don't like to stop projects prior to an intersection. If we can go to an intersection, depending on where we're at, you know, sometimes it makes sense to, if we, we can only afford to do a mile of a two-mile road, we say, okay, we're gonna do the other mile next year. We should stop at a reasonable location and not just say, okay, we're gonna stop right at that pothole, you know, which is, seems to be a thing. I would like to add to what Counselor Lazo said, just a, just a quick thing that I've noticed about contractors in town. So recently, we had, South Street was paved. We had what we just saw happen on Main Street that I don't, I don't, I don't like it, but that's what we're getting. And then we had the paving on, on Ellis Road, which isn't completed yet, but there's a good binder down there. You can, you can see the quality of work. If you go to South Street, you look at the, the asphalt, you look at the level of the structures, how the structures sit on the road surface, it's, it's really nice. They did a very, Palmer Paving did a very nice job. Main Street, unfortunately, Main Street now looks like every other street that National Grid touched in town. Because you've got, you know, two different asphals and you've got, we're gonna have seams that we're gonna keep an eye on. If any of those seams split, we're gonna spend the money, we're gonna have them sealed to try to increase the longevity of that road. I think that the, the work that we got, all, you know, it's not the best, but it's not garbage. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tight paved road. I'm not expecting to see any issues, but we're gonna keep an eye on it. And I, I don't, I think at this time, we don't really have any reports with, with Lynch for the work that they've done. They said as soon as the weather broke, so I can reach back out to them to find out because there has been a lot of complaints about confusion of turning lanes and lines and such. So we're gonna see if we can get that taken care of as soon as possible.
Okay, I'd like to keep this moving. Mr. Lazo and then Francine.
Through you to the director.
I was asked to bring this up by Counselor Adams. He is not happy with Main Street whatsoever and neither am I. What's your, uh?
Can they stay on Ellis Road and Gulf of Road and talk about Main Street and, and agenda number eleven?
Very good. Okay, we'll move it to eleven. Francine.
I have no problem with it. Move to eleven.
Thank you. Francine.
Um, I've been with the town fifteen years. Every time we send out tax bills, I would receive calls and of course, everybody complains about their tax bill. But maybe a quarter of them or more would complain about the roads. This is the first year for me in fifteen years I have not heard a road complaint. Other than, when are they gonna fix my road? So I'm just saying, you know, instead of, you know, they did a shitty job on this, when is the guy coming back? Why is it taking so long? I've just heard it a lot over the years and this is the first time I've not.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move on to, uh, number ten, if we could, discussion update on the West Street project. Director Benoit.
So the recent, I've had recent conversations with Ty and Bond. I'm sure many people have driven by in the last couple of days, saw the roads pulverized. The rains lately are gonna be kind of a foreign everybody's side when it comes to having a major road in, you know, that particular section of town on a hill being dirt. But Ludlow has been pretty responsive with cleanups. We, we did make sure that silt stacks were installed in all of the structures before they were lowered. And so what we're looking at right now is obviously the reclaim is, is, as far as the pulverization of the existing road surface is completed. They will be doing their, their excavation and grading between now and the twenty-seventh. The twenty-seventh, they're gonna be shooting the calcium cap and grinding that in. And they are slated to pave the binder course on August first. The remainder of the curving work and so on, sidewalks and stuff will be taken care of after that. And then we're looking at sometime probably first or second week of September for final paving. There was a meeting yesterday with the school. Everybody's on the same page as to what's gonna happen. Ty and Bond and Ludlow are working directly with everybody involved to make sure that, you know, things try to transition as smooth as possible. All of the work that needs to be completed within the area of the school is going to be attacked first so that that's out of the way before people start coming back to make preparations for the start of the school. So that, at the moment, there's, it's going pretty smoothly.
Great. Mr. Lazo.
Just have a question, goes DPW director. I, this last, I know we got the heavy rain and everything. This last storm I drove down through the intersection with mail and everything. They had just ground down the road to gravel and that downpour, it washed rocks and everything down into the whole curve, into the whole Main Street area. My question to you is, did they clean or they, did they look into that in front of pile stuff as a drain and it was all going into? You might wanna have them look in there to clean it out because a lot of it went in there. Okay, thank you.
This is fine.
Mr. Chair, through you, to the director. Rich, do we have anything in place as far as, I understand they pulverized and everything, but as far as dust control goes, they pulverized on Monday, I believe? I got a couple of calls Monday from people that live West Street, went to wash that area. With the heat we've been having, they can't open their windows because of the amount of dust. Is it something in the contract or?
They're, they're supposed to use a calcium flake during the initial part of the process. While they were finishing up grinding, they did not and, you know, there was some, you know, in perfect times, we hope that the rainstorms help us, but for some strange reason, the way that our weather patterns in New England have been lately, we get some rain and then it turns into a desert shortly thereafter. So it's, it's, we did have the discussion about dust control because I did drive through there. I noticed that there was an awful lot of dust on people's cars. Obviously, it's a little bit different scenario than what we had on South Street because there's a lot more people there. There's a lot more, you know, the driveways are fairly short. There's, there's not a lot of distance between the roads. So it's, it's going to be an ongoing issue, but they are supposed to be, and I, I know that they have been putting down calcium.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? I'm sorry.
So yesterday, I was cleaning basins, but I actually did check that and there is some stuff. It's not real bad, but there was some smaller rock in there and something like that.
It was off of the road. That's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah. I shoveled a bunch of it out of there as much as I could before though because it just started raining again. But I did check it and I am gonna get together with.
Thank you. Anything else on West Street? Very good. Item eleven, discuss future and ongoing projects. Mr. Lazo.
Okay, I got a call from Mr. Adams and he wants to discuss the Main Street. He's not happy with it and neither am I. The same contractor did the Sturridge, going through Sturridge and they had to go back and cut the manholes and bring them up because they were down. Since they repaved our Main Street, every manhole I hit is down this much. Never mind the water cocks. It is poor work. I cannot see accepting this. I would go after a bond and, and make them do the whole street over. It's such a mess. The money we paid for that road and we suffered three years, like, it was ridiculous. I, I would, I would say, you know, to look into going after it legally or something, it, it's terrible. The other thing I have, if I can keep going on, I got a few things. Top of West Street, they patched the road in certain areas. Then they went back and cut little square, squares out of it and left it without pavement. The rain, all the rocks, all over the road again. They're getting away with kind of murder down there. That didn't get, that, that kind of got me. Dresser Hill Road, again, I'm gonna bring it up. I brought it up many times. There's a business at the end of the South Street line. That road is so bad, I go into the opposite lane because you wanna, you know, front pots could fall out. Right in front of, you come back a little bit more and there's a section there. There's two sections that need to be, has attention, before winter anyways, because it's really bad. That's what, that's all I have right there. If you could look into that, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Those sections of Dresser Hill are already on my radar. That was something that I've already been out and measured in working out some ideas of, you know, even if we hire somebody to shim it before winter, just.
There is a business on the end there. There's a lot of traffic on that road.
Something has to happen with that. It's getting, it's only getting worse.
Yeah, it is.
I, I don't wanna spend a lot of money on it because I would prefer to actually repair it as opposed to just put a Band-Aid on it. But I think that in the meantime, it might be worth putting a thin Band-Aid on just to, just to hold it together until at least, you know, we have the time next year maybe to put that on the list as a best project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spine.
Mr. Chair, through you. I have to agree with Mr. Lazo. The director even said he's not impressed with Main Street. So my question is, and I hope anybody can answer it, is there a way, we gave Lynch the benefit of the doubt to repair their poor craftsmanship the first time around. Second time around, is it any prettier? Is there a way or is there a motion I can make to have Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorneys go after Lynch's bond and get Main Street repaired the proper way once and for all? I watched how they did some of those water boxes. I was floored how they did that. And now they're all sinking.
Were they repaired?
They lifted, they lifted and they jackhammered one foot around it and one foot deep, I watched them pry them up and as the paving box was coming by in the following lane, they grabbed hot asphalt, threw in the hole and stamped it down with their feet. Especially the one in front of the old video store. That's about three inches too low. So is there something the town can do to, to, to maybe go after their bond? I know their bond is not a lot of money, which I'll bring that up next, but their craftsmanship, their work is poor. They've done it in Sturridge and I don't think the town should suffer, one, any more than what they are, but two, to have them come back and do what they did on Main Street and Sturridge to cut out four by four boxes and repair it that way. I mean, Main Street, in my opinion, is worse now than when it was when they first paved it last year.
Mr. Lazo.
Through you to Steve. Didn't they have like eight water cocks that were crooked? You couldn't shut them off?
Yep, they fixed the water cocks and we did have them vacuum excavate out the gate boxes in the road. So as far as alignment, they were good. But when it came to the actual road repair, we weren't on site to check every structure and if they screwed that part up, you know, that's unfortunate, but the, the structures are in properly now. As far as gate boxes and water cocks. But I agree with everybody else as far as the, the heightening alignment on those structures.
Thank you.
I spread the money up there when they were paving and then all the structures and the water boxes, I guess you call them, were encased in cement. They hammered it all out and then they prided the boxes up and they, just what they did. They threw asphalt underneath the boxes to keep the height up and they stamped it with their foot.
But there's supposed to be a concrete lockering at the red elevation for those.
Right, and they didn't do that. And I, I know the guy from VBH or whatever. He was there and all I saw them do was put a level across the box to make sure that it was level on his side. But when they finished, it wasn't that way anymore. Some of them are still tilted a little bit and the amount of money, I think, I, I really think, I don't know how you feel, that the bond needs to be called in or, you know, maybe one last ditch effort with, with them. I, I don't know. I never saw so many bosses there watching this and yet to see the, I look at it as shiny work because those boxes were all encased in cement. And all they did was send a guy with the shovel and the bobcat and filled it with asphalt. So as the asphalt cures and curbs, it's not cement like I, I thought should have been there. So.
And unfortunately, not to make excuses for myself in any means, I really would have liked to have been there for the entire process. I did come in the night, spent the night, the night before for the milling process because if, if it would have came in the morning and everything was milled and the milling crew was gone, there would have been sections that they weren't, they would not have done. And I had to correct them a couple of times on some stuff that was agreed upon that they were gonna skimp on. But I wasn't able to be there for all of the paving. I had stopped out during the day twice just to check up on things. They weren't very talkative, but understandably so.
We had our engineers on site that are paid to supervise the job.
Correct. And I, and I did bring that up to, to those engineers, making sure that they were going to be there and that they were gonna take care of that. And I feel as though we were kind of short on, on a couple angles. So I, I think that I can, I can pull up the original contract, you know, put that together with the agreement that was made by our prior town manager. Perhaps I can have a discussion with our current town manager or, I don't know what's going on with the new town manager thing, but, you know, we should probably start on this sooner than later. So I can have a conversation with Charlie and then perhaps we could extend that conversation to, you know, our legal representation and see what, you know, what, if any recourse there is and, you know, if there's a means to move forward because we're distressed. So I will, I'll follow up tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin.
If I may continue?
Sure.
I don't know if there's anything we can do. I was just asking. But to continue on, I noticed Dresser Street has been marked off from LUCO. So I'm gonna tag team between Dresser Street and I'm gonna tag team between my transfer regulations that I've. that I bring up every meeting. What are we doing about them? We've been talking about it for two years now, five, six months with you. It doesn't seem to me to be going anywhere. We're not enforcing it. I think we need to enforce it, especially with Dresser Street, looks like it's gonna get ripped open and for them to come in and do that eight-foot swath and leave two feet on each side, you know, on the curb side or whatever it might be, and then laterals, I think that's something that we're looking at now and not later.
Counsel, if I may, Counsel Adams has specifically said that one item that he's paying particular attention to is that, he calls it the trench policy, and that, I believe he's had discussions with you already, with the Director, and that part of the problem is that it needs to be enforced to begin with. And Counsel Adams and the Director are looking into that to begin with. And they're also gonna look at the policy as a whole. It's my understanding that generally, the policy looks pretty good. There may be some tweaks that need to be done, but that on the whole, the policy looks pretty good. But the key is really that it needs to be enforced to begin with. So the Chair of this committee is looking into that issue.
I just hope I, with the Chair, that's the honor. And I just hate to see...
Sir? Sir? Counsel, thank you. Mr. Spleen has the floor.
I just hate to see what happened on South Street happen in the future. I mean, in my opinion, I don't know if it's impacting South Street or not. I mean, there is a patch in the center between two laterals and the way that the regulations I interpret them, that should've been joined, along with a few other things joined in there, but it, I'm just caught off guard where we let contractors come into town and be working on a town and we don't know they're coming in. It's my understanding at our last meeting that we had no clue when NUCO was coming in to do their repairs, and two days later, Rich was caught off guard, but they started milling our roads. Me personally, I mean, I like to know if somebody's coming on my property, and I'm sure Rich would agree with me, I'm sure, I know he was caught off guard on that. But, I mean, that, what they did on South Street, to me, is that, I don't know, I don't agree with how they did that. I'd like to see if we can stop that from happening in the future, if possible. Update and look at those trench regulations. The other question I have is, I noticed around town, and I'm all for it to a point, there's been a lot, a lot of trees planted in town. A lot. My question is, the trees that were planted on Dresser Street. So, I understand the organization that did it, it's free trees, they do all the planting, it's great, I'm all for it. But is the town involved with any of that process as far as where they get planted? Because if you start from the town hall and go up Dresser Street, the ones that are on the left side, and there is twenty-some out of them, are directly underneath the power lines. In the next five years, they're gonna be into the power lines. Sidewalks right there, we've had problems in the past with sidewalks being lifted because of all the trees on Dresser Street, so I just, I'm kinda baffled at how we're doing that, where we complained years ago because the trees were lifting sidewalks and repairing sidewalks, cutting trees down for it. But now we're planting twice as many trees, and now they're underneath the power lines. So I, like I said, I got nothing against the program. I actually call them, because they do it for free and you qualify, I agree with it. But it's just, on where they're planting them, is the town involved in deciding where they do, not? I'm kinda confused on that.
I share the same sentiment. That was a surprise to me, that I had heard something that there was going to be trees planted in town. There was X amount of trees that were gonna get planted on South Bridge properties. None of that came through me as to where they were going. And then obviously, the, I did hear about the Facebook post, it was brought to my attention. There was some concern that was brought to my attention by some of the DPW workers in regards to the flooding issues that we have had on Dresser Street at the bottom of the hill, where now there's all these trees planted, and trees have leaves, and we all know how that works. So I do plan on calling to have a discussion with the Otakum people to see if we can make some changes to some stuff, and then establish some sort of a policy moving forward as to discussion for the locations. If we're gonna be doing things along these lines, you know, we need to be mindful of what other problems we might be creating. To back up to your last thing, real quick, about the utility work that's gonna be done on Dresser Street. I am currently holding those permits, the permits for those projects just came across my desk, I believe, yesterday. I'm currently holding them, I have not signed them or issued permits yet. Before I do so, I intend to have a discussion with our sewer department, our water department, and then move forward with conversations with the utilities to find out, you know, where we're at, where we're gonna be at, and, you know, should we be looking at, you know, taking their money as opposed to just allowing them to come back in and pave it? Obviously, most of these streets are in poor condition, so we could be looking at some other options. But hopefully, we'll have some better staffing and we can work on some of that old insight that we've been talking about.
If I may?
Sure.
Since my boss made it.
I hope so.
Another meeting.
So, Rich, can we possibly look at Main Street from, say...
Yes.
Okay. High Street to Main Street. There are numerous, and Main Street, in my opinion, Main Street should always be up to par at all times. I mean, that's what everybody sees coming into this town. But driving Main Street the last two months, especially from Sturbridge to South Bridge, has been horrible. The hill has three patches that were opened up from the utility company, one of them that sank four inches, and they came back with three shovelfuls, and it's still four inches down. Halfway up, I think it's like in front of 630, 632, there's a pothole that's a dump truck hole. You get up to Main and Oaks. The gas company did all that work last year, they came in, they milled and paved Oak Street, but they never did the Main Street section right there, and the trench is already five inches in the ground right there. So is there a way we can start going after it? It's all about the enforcement, we talked it, I know you got a ton of stuff on your plate. But in my opinion, I think our Main Street should try to look the best it possibly can at all times. We all know what happened in a section of town, we're dealing with it.
So, I agree. And going back to what Counsel Dow said earlier about, you know, fixing roads to pieces and so on, you know, for me, coming into South Bridge, I come up 131 out of Connecticut, I hit the, you know, the town maintained portion of the road just past to Golden Creek. I come up East Main Street, you know, come into the Rotary and head up through town. If you follow that route, it's pretty sad that, you know, that this is our entrance to town. You know, I plan on having a discussion with Steve about the East Main Street project that they've already started to plan. I have some issues with it already, the fact that, you know, I know we're doing the project because of the water main upgrade, but there's, I have questions as to why we're not doing the whole thing. You know, why are we not going to, you know, where are our limits at? Why are we stopping 1,200 feet short? And then, you know, the Rotary, you know, I don't remember how many years Rotary's been there, when that was paved, but it's falling apart. It's starting to come apart. The section of Main Street from the Rotary to where our new pavement is now, that's not great. You know, from the end of that new pavement beyond South Street through the 600 block and down the hill, that's not great. But these are some of the things that, in my mind, I'm looking at as far as where we should go. I have some thoughts on some pavement preservation projects on East Road, Woodstock Road, to maybe go rubberize, chip seal on those roads. There will be some other repairs that'll be needed, you know, to save those roads. But I'm also, I'm gonna be talking to Mast DOT, one of the contractors that's kinda giving me a little bit of help in the background, company I used to work for. They put me through to some other people that are, they're giving me some information. There may be some other funding available through the state for numbered roads program and such, you know, along with Chapter 92, to do some of that work. So we're gonna look into things like that. And also, we need to look into the little streets that nobody has seen or heard from in the last thirty years. Mr. Mark Taddius contacted me recently with some issues on blown-out streets, you know, little dead-end streets that are in horrible condition, you know. And those people, you know, they wanna see their roads done too. So we're gonna try to, we're gonna find a balance to try to keep moving. And hopefully, we can make some good results in the next couple of years.
I agree, if I may. I agree with you 100%. You're talking stuff that's two years down the road, three years down the road. In my opinion, Main Street is something you can call in under the trench regulations. They just dug them four months ago. The gas line on Oak Street falls under a three, I mean, something like that can be done now where it doesn't cost the taxpayers money.
Absolutely.
And like I said, I know you got a ton of stuff on your plate. Now, Main Street, thank you.
Counsel, Chairman Dow.
Just a quick bit on the Main Street project. In the spec, does it call for concrete blocks on the watercocks?
I do believe so.
And if it does, that's all we have to do is expose it, do it done properly, they'll be liable for it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would I be in order to ask that we adjourn? Is there anything else, really? We've passed these conversations for months and months and months, and we're still the same thing, so I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
There you go, a motion to second to adjourn.
I'll listen to you.